I call this further meeting of the Verona City Council. On Monday, August twenty first, seven o'clock P M to order. Madam, would you please read the open meetings back?
Notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied with respect to this meeting of the Township Council. The meeting time and date were included in the public meeting notice along with the public internet link and telephone call in information. Said notice and the meeting agenda was posted in the municipal building and sent to the official newspapers of the township, the Verona City Road Times. And the Star Ledger at least forty-eight hours preceding the start time by this meeting. The agenda and public handouts can be viewed online at veronanj.org/councilmeetings. And a public comment period will be held in the order listed on the meeting agenda. Instructions on how to comment will be provided at the appropriate time.
Madam, could you please pull it on?
Councilwoman Holland?
Here.
Councilwoman McGrath?
Here.
Councilman Roman?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McCoy?
Here.
Mayor Tamboro?
Here.
Mayor, also President State Township Manager Joe DiArco, Township Attorney Brana Loyah, myself, Municipal Clerk Jennifer Karen.
Thank you. Please stand. Join me.
Do you send this in the what? The United States. The District of Public Works is friends. Online meeting. Ah, here, Tom. Individus fall.
We're going to be.
Justice.
For the one? Uh, first, in the mayor's report, I've wanted to take a moment to offer condolences to the Steel Old Family um, on the loss of Anita. Mrs. Steel was a tutor at Captain Brown for twenty-five years, a public volunteer in the community, and was a fixture at Town Council Meetings for many years. He was here only just recently. Um, there's a beautiful remembrance ceremony yesterday uh that really capture of her, her character and her impact on the community. Um, next, I would like to thank our cultural works and fire department, O E M, police department, and the Township Manager's Office for their work ensuring adequate water pressure after a system failure by the Paseig Valley Water Commission. Um, I appreciate all the residents who reached out to us with questions and comments throughout the, the few days. Um, several residents, uh, we shared, did share those comments with Township Manager's Office throughout. Um, some of my fellow council members and I share concerns with the township administration um during the event on communications with residents. Um, I asked Mr. DiArco to report on these lessons learned, to really take some time and go through this um and to share what steps we'd be doing to improve moving forward. Mr. DiArco will address this and measure for that. Joe, thank you for doing that. Um, Mr. DiArco was answered my phone call. How many times were we on? Uh, at pretty late hours and uh he uh he did a great job uh getting, making sure that we had water coming to uh all these homes. Um, please join us for the last installment of our summer concert series this Wednesday, featuring Stiletto and Saxton of a Carbine Orchestra. It will be held at six thirty P M at the Verona Community Pool and is open to all Verona residents regardless of pool membership. Um, please join us as, uh, as well on September eleventh for our remembrance ceremony eight forty-five A M at the nine eleven memorial at the east side of the civic center closest to Chase Bank. We will be having a special open public meeting this Friday to interview potential planners. The meeting is being held at three o'clock and it's on Zoom only. Uh, but the meeting is open to the public, so feel free to come and interview some planners with us. Um, a week from tomorrow on Tuesday, August twenty ninth at seven o'clock P M, we're going to be having our special goal setting meeting. Um, we'll talk a little bit more in business about what that'll look like. Um, but I do encourage everybody to participate. There will be opportunity for open public um meetings. We will not take any action on any agenda items that's meeting in order to focus only on goal setting. Um, Mr. DiArco and Ms. Northrup, if you guys could really get out there and publicize those two special meetings, that would be great. So we can get some resident engagement um for the public who don't know who Ms. Northrup is. She's our new public information officer. And she's sitting in the room uh probably on sometimes social media telling people about her meeting. So they got um. I want to wish all Verona students here and going back to college or starting college um a lot of success to start a new academic year. And finally, um, I had the opportunity to speak with Captain Wardrobe. Um, camera, but what a week it was uh regarding some uh a large collection of off-road vehicles that tend to find their way through Verona. I know I Councilman Roman spoke to Chief Karenin as well. Uh, the chief offered to give us a briefing on this. So Chief Karenin, if you would join us now, that would be great.
We've had um as much of the state has seen a rise in uh A T Vs, all-terrain vehicles, dirt bikes, uh, caravanning through town on and off for the last uh maybe year. Um, on May twelfth was the first incident where it was an excess of a hundred. From May twelfth until up to this past Saturday, it's been every week, sometimes twice a week. Um, Verona, uh, we hosted a meeting with surrounding chiefs of other towns that are affected about two weeks ago um to try to strategize all, all the while um based on Attorney General Guidelines and common sense as well. Um, we cannot gauge with this caravan. Um, it's just too dangerous to the public. Yes, they are creating a hazard. Um, we're very concerned about the public safety aspect of it. Um, so we did team up with the county and state resources. We're working on different plans with not only Essex County but statewide. Um, situation is that, if I may, sure, I'm just advising against announcing publicly the actions that I know you're going to take if the council wants to discuss that privately, but we certainly don't want the uh misdoers to know what action you plan on taking the next time they arrive in Verona. I know it's going to be swift. And uh, soon as we action to this.
Mayor, if I may, the chief and I have had a discussion so that there is a section and closed session for the council.
Sir, go on, chief.
So the, the uh, again, it's plagued the state uh so much so that the governor did change some legislation in twenty twenty-two um that we'll be looking at and seeing what's applicable uh for Verona and our situation. Uh, there's, there's different ordinances out there about fueling up and, and various uh towns have enacted, but um we're just seeing what, what's going to assist Verona best.
If you need our help with that in any way, speaking to legislators or whatever, if you come up with things that where there could be a legislative solution to this, um, after speaking to Captain Wardrobe, it's clear that their legislative solution may not be the right solution, but it could be a start. So if there's anything from us, reach out. We're happy to.
I just, I, I urge the residents, I, I understand it's an inconvenience, but um at this point, it's a minor inconvenience. Uh, but I just urge your residents to um you know, use caution when it comes through. We do send police cars to try to clear intersections and um to really not engage in any of uh running into the, into the uh assembly of, of uh caravan. Um, until we can come up with something through the state and county.
And it is something going on. We have a lot of municipalities that happen newer for the weekend. You know, this is a something happened kind of everywhere in the, this, this county.
Yes.
Uh, but we appreciate your taking the initiative to go and speak to the other police chiefs to try and strategize on some action. That's important. Any council personnel questions?
I mean, um, just, I did do a little bit more in-depth peep into, you know, there are basically two potential legislative items that could be considered. Uh, and we can debate effectiveness or appropriateness, but I figured I might mention the two tools that exist in the toolbox. Remember when the chief already mentioned um uh prohibiting uh gas stations from fueling uh A T Vs or dirt bikes that are not on a trailer in the back of a pickup truck. Um, you can do that and enforce it by a municipal ordinance. Um, the challenge there is obviously that now you're asking a fuel station attendant to uh say no when this sort of thing rolls through. Um, the other one is that uh what was permitted by the state is that the vehicles can be subject to forfeiture only if there is a municipal ordinance declaring that they um essentially pose a public safety hazard immediately. Uh, you have to have that ordinance on the books, but that does allow for uh the forfeiture of the vehicles themselves. Those are the two things. Um, and I thank you, chief, for the discussion today and for, for coming here tonight. I'm just concerned, I want to make sure that we look into every avenue and this is uh, you know, I don't want this to turn into a tragedy. Um, it's, you know, yes, it is public disorder. It is inconvenience. It's noisy, but it is in fact dangerous. Um, especially on Bloomfield Avenue. We had enough incidents out there already as it is. So I would suggest that we at least sincerely consider the two uh potential ordinances that we could pass and review whether or not we feel, you know, what the best way to legislate might be. Um, and if we choose to do either of those two, I would suggest at least one of them.
Any other council? Uh, and for residents, if you do have concerns, please reach out. The chief Karenin and Captain Wardrobe will always happy to answer your questions. Thanks, chief. All right. Uh, and for our county liaisons report, should I call you?
Council, hopefully we're all doing well. Um, this past week, uh, the manager and myself had a wonderful meeting with our public, uh, the county public works director and engineering. And I'm assuming that uh he'll speak about the issues that we went over. Uh, both myself and Mr. DiArco were very pleased when we left the meeting. Um, the, the piece of the, the tie and everyone, Mr. DiArco and myself were happy in that respect and I know he'll brief you on issues that we discussed. Um, starting off with my other report, we have a homeless connect uh on Wednesday of this week, August twenty-third. It runs from ten to two at Glenfield Park in Montclair. And if anyone is looking for information, the number is nine seven three three nine five eight three five zero. That's nine seven three three nine five eight three five zero. And uh, some of the things that they will address would be help the screening. Um, haircut showers, public access, mental health services, veteran services, employment services, food, and uh much more. And you can probably go to the county executive website if you're looking for, and it's from ten to two at Essex County, uh Glenfield Park, fifty-five Maple Avenue, Montclair. So uh, that is Wednesday of this week. Uh, again, we'll have, we're having our September eleventh service at the, uh, by the High Lawn and Eagle Rocket Preservation. And that's September eleventh at uh nine A M. Sharp, we start that right at nine and, and it's a program if you've never been there. Uh, September twenty-first, it is our Parks Foundation Golf Outing. It's at Francis Byrne. Uh, you can go to the Parks website or the county executive's website. And it's a great outing. Um, like I said, the last time we did eight million dollars worth of improvements to Francis Byrne, one of the uh citizens uh came up to me about one of our other golf courses. Uh, all three of our golf courses are well maintained and uh it's tough to get a tee time, so go to the website. Uh, September twenty-third, it's the full festival at the environmental center and it starts at eleven A M. Same date, September twenty-third, it's the brew at the zoo. And that starts at six P M. Great, another great event uh to go and mingle with people and have, have some fun. Um, getting already to October, we are having uh on October third, from ten to two P M at Cody Arena, our senior wellness. Again, it's helping seniors. Uh, if you, you have transportation issues, I did speak to our transportation person. Uh, if anybody needs some type of tran- transportation, we supply buses, et cetera. Uh, and you can again either call me or call the county website or check out the county website. Uh, Friday, October sixth, the uh it's a, this is a wonderful event. It's at Irish Gardens in Montclair. It's a fountain of glow, uh, various schools cut pumpkins. They put it out. It's very, very nice. It usually starts around dark, but it's a very, very nice event in Montclair. It's one of, that one of our parks. Um, uh, Saturday, October ninth, we're starting our hazardous wastes, uh, household waste, and that's from eight thirty to four P M at ninety-nine Bradford in Cedar Grove. Uh, bringing household waste, chemicals, et cetera, that you need to dispose of. And um I think that's about it.
The insurance I saw this, Mr. Culture. You, you have an electronics. Usually it follows up with electronics recycling.
Well, but they didn't give me the.
Somewhere, okay. I've, I've been hurt so. Uh, can you continue? Yes, sure. Uh, I just, I forgot to bring this up last meeting, but thank county for redoing the lines on Bloomfield Avenue. Every time they're repainted, my intersection at Lakeside and, and Bloomfield Avenue, those lines help immensely coming up, going west on Bloomfield Avenue, so.
And that was one of the issues that came up at our meeting?
Yeah.
So.
Much appreciated.
You're quite welcome. I will tell the engineer.
Any other questions, comments for Mr. Culture? Thank you, gentlemen. Right, the township manager's report, Mr. DiArco.
Mayor. Uh, first, I'd like to thank Jay for coordinating the arrangement of the meeting with county engineer. Uh, it was um very uh opportune uh and helpful. We discussed a number of items before I go into my standard agenda and report on the water issue. Um, we did discuss uh Bloomfield Avenue, the rehabbing and, and lights. Uh, it's going to be uh in design in twenty twenty-four and be implemented probably in twenty twenty-five. So Jay's there helping me out. Um, it was a very productive meeting. Uh, the painting of Grove and Fairview Avenue, the uh engineer said, yes, they're doing painting now and they'll get there. Uh, the fairview and person that traffic light is on on the deck for them, and that's uh was a yes?
Yes.
There you go. I'm just making sure we both.
I'll concur.
You both had the same thing going. Um, there, I had a request in for the county for a prisoner's pond and the adjacent property to prisoner's pond. That is a no. Uh, that's not going to be transferred to us um for a number of reasons, and they're not inclined to do that. Uh, parking lot adjacent to the Verona Pool, uh, the parking lot is uh on loan to us to use as a parking lot, and they will not pick a wall on that parking lot. So we'll start to look into alternate plans. Um, the entrance to Verona Park on Bloomfield Avenue where all the traffic barricades are. Um, the county engineer uh did bring a uh young gentleman into the room. I believe he's one of the engineers, W, uh, about uh extending that island so that we can do, they can do away with barricades and making it more safe entry, exit from uh Verona Park. Right now, it turns into uh traffic. They're going to make a right-hand turn, and that's why those forces are there. Uh, I did discuss uh Lady of Lake parking lot and the potential of a county installing a crosswalk at the nearest uh intersection, and they'll be looking into that forest, the crosswalk uh with the, not the traffic light, but with the signal across dash and crossing. That'll be under review by county engineer. And I did provide the engineer with the uh traffic uh the neighborhood traffic safety committee report that they produced. I, I did bring a copy with me and I asked him to review uh any of the items that are appropriate for the county. That was the conclusion of our meeting. I thought it was very productive. And uh I did thank him for their electric charging station at the county parking lot. And then I may, since I come early at seven, seven-thirty, I may go there to charge my car, my personal car and have coffee with the engineer on a regular basis.
Tell them the key, the first thirty minutes are free.
The first thirty minutes are free. And since it's a charge point, I do have a personal account for it. I, it was a very good meeting. We, we do plan to meet more in county.
Sure.
Um, before I get into my agenda list, I we would uh jump into the report I provided to the council. And it was a timeline of all the events and, and your, your field staffs were performed excellently in the field. They were on top of the uh, the water outage from the Paseig Valley Water Commission uh and that failure, which was the second failure. I'm not sure the council provides, there were two failures, one prior to the major event. Uh, our police, our public works, water, uh, all the staffs were in the field, uh, did an excellent job. Uh, trying to get through this as rapidly as possible. But what we did focus on in a, in a wrap-up meeting after water was uh reinstalled, um, we did have a meeting with uh police, fire, rescue, O E M, and our public information officer uh who prepared all the input and the report that's in front of you was prepared by Elisa. And I want to focus on what we think are uh at that point in time after the meeting, those key items that we need to address for the future. Uh, was there hopefully never another major event, uh, but we need, we need to plan for them. And if you don't mind, mayor and council, I'll go through them for the public and it would be available to the public also. Um, and leading off with the first item is to develop uh a protocol for all the departments included the following items, an emergency alert protocol responsible for sending alerts for the various scenarios and how alerts are distributed, ensuring there is a redundant backup uh for protocol. I think the council has heard me many times saying we do need redundancy in all the departments. We do need that balls to the community. So nothing literally, if someone is not available, there, there is a second backing up, whatever piece that we have in motion. Uh, how often updates are needed, that's still under discussion by the groups on what is appropriate, what isn't appropriate uh as in that uh we will finalize that for the council. A clear outline on who is responsible for what information, then we'll go into the the uh public information officer so that a uniformed uh messages is sent out to the community in the various modalities that we're going to be working with. Uh, greet upon communication channels uh in priority order. Social media is not a priority emergency alert communication channel. Or on a TV, maybe an additional avenue that we can be used. Uh, prepared statements for employees fielding public phone calls to ensure unified messages. Uh, prepared uh the list of types of emergency events and other suggestions that the staffs may have, including the council, by the way, any suggestion that the council has on the, incorporated into what we do. Uh, include the uh health department, the future events. Uh, that was an oversight. Some of the uh restaurants were notified, some were not. But I did not, I did not uh have the health department notified. Uh, it was an oversight on my part. Uh, even though we were getting water from Montclair, there was a uh bad assumption that they would have been tapped in. Uh, create a protocol to alert multi uh unit buildings. So we did send a notice to um the claretge, but uh our other multi-family units in town, uh rent control, uh administrative assistant, Christine gave the police department all the contact people for all of the multi-dwellings that are listed. So in any future emergency, they'll get a notification just like we did for the claretge. Um, included uh additional residents that may be outside of Verona. That was a surprise to me. We had some uh houses on the border of West Orange that received water from us. Uh, although we contacted some of our perimeters and they should have known because they're also on the Paseig Valley. But we did have residents in West Orange that get water from us that didn't get contacted. So we're looking into all of those via, uh, vis-à-vis our water billing system. Uh, communications with the Paseig Valley Water Commission. Uh, Elisa has, has, yes. Uh, Elisa has met with the, or scheduled, I should see if there's a, met uh with their public information officers. So in the future, missed messages or missed signals will come out of that agency. Um, when there's a gap in what's said, if it leaves it to the township. Uh, they alerted the community that uh they did not declare uh boil water. In fact, D E P declared it, but by not saying D E P declared it, left us criticism that we just decided on our own.
Um, so.
Jump in there for a second.
Sure.
Mr. DiArco and I did call the P I O Director of Communications for the, and uh she did take the call right away. I'm not sure she knew what she was in for, but uh she was very responsive to our concerns and was investigating our concerns right away. Um, so that was a very positive. Unfortunately, a couple of things happened that you can't take back, but that was a very positive word from Paseig Valley Water as well.
What, what in, in the team, our teams, our staff, uh, what's most important for us is moving forward all the pieces that we have to put in place just because the emergency has ended, uh, what our situation is solved. These issues moving forward need to be addressed so that we are in a better position for any future emergency that may happen. I would like to believe never will after emergency happen. And proactive uh promotion of the Verona Alert System. We did find a uh not a floor in our system. We first thought there was a module that didn't get purchased at, when it took place. But in fact, it was not that. They sent the upgrades to um the former manager and uh didn't come into management. We're also putting in place a redundant system that will come into more than one person so that that can't happen. You don't want everything centered in one individual. Um, it's my, my fear of, if you're not there, life should keep moving on. It should be covered. So that's also been addressed in the police department. Captain Wardrobe, we have just met with the uh, the company, Alert for Law Verona, uh, so that we have all the pieces in place and, and doing better with that. Um, and they'll be working on various scenarios similar to what your O E M does, what your fire department does. Your in-house emergency system has to do the same back. Now happen moving forward. Uh, I, I really enormously appreciate the work the staff did. They spent a lot of time on this and I think in, in a positive note of what can we do better? That was the tone of the meeting and, and everybody contributed to how can we do a lot better moving forward in the future.
I appreciate that. Um, here's a pause right here. The council member sent any questions or comments on the water piece with Mr. DiArco? Concludes this report.
Um, yes, um, I just want to thank you for this, like, very comprehensive uh debrief, both articulating every piece of communication that went out in the time and then really being reflective on the gaps. I think that's important to do with any um event. It was as significant as this. Um, but um uh, and I think it leads to best practices. So I do really appreciate uh that. And I also appreciate all the residents who spoke up by either calling the uh township or by emailing the council or emailing the administration because that helped us to also identify gaps. Um, and I really liked with the water emergency, looking at the billing system to make sure we're hitting because I think we had customers both in North Caldwell and Cedar Grove, and so how can we do better there? One thing I would add is I think you have an opportunity to, there's a lot of nonprofit groups in town, and so if the emergency is big enough, there could be an email to all of the presidents or leaders of those organizations to help them get the word out, uh, which may also be another layer of helpfulness. Um, that's just.
Thank you. I just made a note. I'm sure Elisa did too. I see her there.
Who else? I uh, I echo Councilman Grass's statements. I appreciate um you taking the time to do the, the post-evaluation of this and entire team doing it. This is how we grow. This is something that's very ingrained in the emergency services. Um, and picking that culture and bringing it into the township is um, is huge. And I think that we'll we'll see more and I hope the residents will continue to be engaged and um, you know, the one conversation I had is in many ways we have to meet the residents where they are. Um, that sometimes we can't expect the residents necessarily to meet us where we are when we need to be engaged. So uh, that was a, that was a big thing. But I think we all spend a lot of time on the phone and an email during that time. Um, and uh, we appreciate the fact that you were able to take all of our comments and distill them into a report and a lot of what you had down. And we appreciate the fact that you were able to take all of our comments and distill them into a report and a lot of what you had down. Your own evaluation anyway, and that's this framework.
And it came from the staff and it came from the public in review, and I think that's important, what I did. Didn't highlight trying to run through this is there's going to be a special effort on the alert for. What we found is a lot of people do have an alert for Verona, don't. And some residents missed a step, which left them all off the. On top of the fact that we didn't have the update. So there'd be an effort for that, I think if you look at the webpage now, it's in the it's in the header going across, Elisa already put that up. About a special effort and drive to do that, so we'll be working on that. Moving on to my regular agenda. I'll I'll present through this. Friends of the Park is is moving to. Very well, Steve Neil has that effort for us, so we still have Steve, he's planning a meeting in September. So you'll see something coming from Steve. The rate study, water study, I've met with the company. You'll on your next agenda will be an authorization to the study, funding was in place before I got here. The company has circulated to the mayor and council. The comments actually were very, very good from our in-house. Google and the council, if there was anything wrong with that proposal, I would have heard about. And I did some review with another professional in that area and. All looks good now, I'll be moving and hopefully I can finish that before the year is out with the company. He I met the Cedar Grove manager to move our fire prevention into local long. I held ever field reconstruction, which was the plans or preliminary plans were done. By the necrolyer firm, I held that for the council meeting, they are, the preliminaries are prepared for your review, but. Since we were going to have a meeting on capital and future scheduled items, I held it. For that meeting instead of trying to issue it six times. PFAS is on schedule, our applications are in the T E P, the latest minutes were sent to you. The solid waste contract will be announced and released shortly, so we can be awarding in November. So that's been reviewed, it's been in the attorney's office and we're ready to release that. Now be handled through. Public system that the township uses under the Q P A. You have special meeting scheduled, CDBG important item. Chuck and I sit on this, the community development, you put me back there. And Chuck coordinated with CDBG and our grant writers and applications for the reprogramming funding. Since we were shovel ready with the playground going out to bid in September. We had the grant firm, Chuck worked with them to submit another application, so we possibly can get some of the reprogramming money. And we also put in an application for the senior citizen annex. All the roof repairs that you need on the senior citizen annex, which is. And thank you Chuck, he really jumped right into that one for us. Yeah, and the clerk will get all the paperwork for the public hearings and coordinate those required. I do have some closed session items for the council and for our personnel.
Thank you, and I did read through the Boswell Engineering update. I do have a concern about their status update on the claret tube pump. We've talked a lot about water and we had a big, you know, fire emergency there not that long ago. And it just seems like Boswell's waiting for something from another firm. If you wouldn't mind giving attention to that, that that other firm is being timely, or is it that? The other colleagues is still working on the design, you happen to know?
Yes, I'm just trying to me to jump in, yes, I did need that and I notified colleagues, I need that ASAP.
Okay, I mean that's. Long time coming, but clearly we we need that enhancement. And then on the community center playground project as well. From their their update, it seems like, you know, they're revising of plan as was necessary because engineering wise they weren't. Where they needed to be, I just, we may need a step where we we go back to the public. To show the final design, we did get a lot of, and this may be prior to your arrival, this project's been going on for so long unfortunately. But we did, you know, show it to ADA advocates in the community, the child, the child group. They were made public with recreation, we may need to still put that step in for a period of time. Especially if the plant, the design changed at all, I think the public, the rec committee provided feedback and we may. Need to circle back quickly with all those groups, that would be. Those were the two major things from their update, I do love their updates and the memos from. Jacobs on the PFAS projects, they're so helpful. And, you know, I look forward to reading more of them, but definitely that claret project really needs to move. I'm sure the council agrees.
Of course. Mr. Diarco, speaking of Boswell Engineering, with the change in the zoning department, it's possible going back to providing us.
Yes, they are, and I do have scheduled interviews for new zones. They're there on Tuesdays and. Tenually scheduled for Tuesdays and Thursdays, so that when. Items come in city office on Mondays, they'll be addressed on Tuesdays. Items coming in on Wednesday will be addressed on Thursday, items come Friday, be addressed on Tuesday night.
All right, hearing none, we'll move on to our council reports.
Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, much of mine was, questions were answered already, I will just have one thing. To also extend my condolences to the the old family for the tragic passing of Anita. As I'm looking out the audience, I miss her smiling face already and. I wish the family a lot of strength, it was a tough weekend for them.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilman Roman.
On the same topic, Anita, you know, known her for ages, she's one of my oldest friends in this town, she was friends in this town. Just will very much miss her and not just her presence, you know, here in town council meeting, it was always wonderful and. Her comments were always very incitely, but just her as a friend as well. I always remember, you know, the one time I saw her for my annual pickup of Christmas cookies, she said I would like an additional grandchild, which I, you know. I was incredibly sweet and that, just my condolences to Al, her entire family and everybody, so. And appreciated very much the very touching board service yesterday.
Thank you, that's all. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Grass.
Thank you, I just want to kind of re-thank the staff for all of their hard work during the water emergency. It was really a complicated event and. While I was not in Verona during that time, I woke up every morning to a slew of emails and updates. And I do appreciate the staff's responsiveness on communication to course correct in the middle of it. You know, my observations from it is that we have a very, very lean staff and we did lose a very important staff member. That did a lot of communications and I just am so. Happy that, you know, I know I personally supported the creation of a personal information officer position. Granted, it was on a part-time basis, but that was something that I felt was really important and I had lent in my support as that was being discussed. And it turns out that that position was really, really important during this emergency, given the fact that our deputy. Our, you know, we lost a key person in our staff in Steve Neil and he wasn't here to communicate during this, so. For me, this is also just a reflection, not only on how important communication is. But how important staffing is, and we have a very, very lean staff. I continue to worry if we have too lean of a staff. I hope when we hire for all of these positions, we still need to be reflective once we're back to full staff. If we're actually still too lean, and that is a concern that I do have and we. May need to make adjustments in the future and figure out ways of bringing in more revenue so that we can meet the needs of staff. And, you know, I think it's a healthy debate for our council to have, but. For now, I want to thank everyone who worked so hard on the water emergency. We do have a multicultural inclusion and accessibility advisory committee meeting. On Wednesday night, so I may miss the pool concert unfortunately. But the group will be talking about ball event planning and Mr. Diarco. We may be following up with you and other staff spaced on the phones, so, and that's my report.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Hall.
Thank you. I also want to. Offer some comments on the water emergency and the township administration's response. I really appreciate the close look at lessons learned, in particular the feedback with regard to alert Verona. So I was communicating with members of the public throughout the. The water emergency and the boil water advisory. And one thing that I repeatedly heard from residents was confusion about alert Verona. And whether they had signed up for it and weren't receiving the messages, so I do think it's a great opportunity. To make your proactive change and actually get that communication out to the public, I know there was a push when we first converted from Nixol to. Alert Verona under our prior administration, so I think it's a good opportunity, we've had a lot of changeover in our residents. To actually get out there and do that communication about how to properly register. And to perhaps even consider having like a registration clinic, so that members of the public who are having that problem where. Maybe they didn't complete the process, so they're not getting that message can actually get that because. As I will say that it was a lot of folks and and it was a little troubling at the time, so I'm grateful that the administration has done that critical. Self-assessment, I do want to encourage residents to utilize the pool, we have a few more weeks left of unofficial summer. Because summer actually extends much longer than our pool season, but. I do want to encourage residents to utilize the pool and those that don't have memberships, please avail yourself of the Free Family Night and the. The summer concert at the pool, with that in mind, it is back to school time very soon, so I do want to. Also, you know, offer my best wishes to students returning for a new academic year as well as staff. But with that in mind, as we transition out of kind of unofficial summer into more of that back to school and pumpkin spice fall kind of vibe. I think it's really important to remember that hurricane season actually extends well into November. And that we do, we have seen very extreme storms hit our community in September and October. Notably, you know, Hurricane Sandy was an October storm. Recently Hurricane Ida, where we had very substantial flooding in our community was September first. So I think it's just important to remain vigilant and prepared, it makes it all the more important that we do have our emergency response system. Available to the public, so I do hope that residents make sure that they take actions to prepare their families. For these emergencies, even as they're doing their back to school shopping, thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council. All right, at this time, I'm going to open public comment for any matter. Madam Clerk, would you please read the public participation?
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any matter, please. Approach the lectern if you're attending via Zoom, via Zoom. You raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button on your monitor, if you're dialing in by phone. If press star nine to recognize, clearly state only your name and township of residence and record. You're not required to provide your street address, if you do, please note that these meetings will be posted on the web of township's YouTube channel. And addresses will not be redacted for any purpose, you have four minutes to address the council. After everyone wishing to speak has been heard, council may address your comments and or questions.
Center of the room who would like to come.
Thank you, good evening, everybody, Chris Ross, I'm at Forty-Six Howell Drive. The reason. Want to step up here tonight is because I happen to live very close to the West Orange. Green Acres area that's going to be redeveloped. And I never come to this meeting to to raise any awareness about it, I haven't done anything. My my house actually backs up right against the corner of Essex Fells. And in West Orange, so I'm like the last house, official house in that area. So, you know, it's been probably a year and a half. It's kind of that they've talked about the redevelopment, a lot of things have happened since. And actually, my neighbor Jean is here and I expect she'll be talking in a minute. I just wanted to raise a couple of quick things, one is I don't know how much, how involved we are as a community, like Verona is involved in this. My expectation that there's very little, maybe there was calls made to the mayor of West Orange to explain our. You know, community, our our opinions on that, but. I thought that I would raise it because there's a couple of things going on, one, most importantly, I I understand. You know, land gets redeveloped and and a lot of us that live in those areas, it's unfortunate at times. I don't really feel that way in this case, I do appreciate Greenland, it's nice to live next to Greenland, I've had some great. Years living next to it, it's been great for my kids. But I would say that one of the big concerns is now the the access. To go up into that area, as you guys know, it's a pretty closed off area, it's nice, we know who our neighbors are, we know what's going on. Now, West Orange is going to introduce five hundred new apartments and that's going to change a lot of things. But we, but our expectation up there is that it's not going to change the traffic pattern, which is good. However, I understand that the, there is going to be an access road which could be used in the future. As a way where somebody could lobby to have that changed into an actual address or into a real road. I would like to know if we're doing anything on that, is anybody talking to West Orange? Is there anything more we can do, obviously you don't have to comment on that now, I live up there, I'm available. And I'm sure a number of our neighbors are, so I just wanted to bring awareness to it. And that's it.
Thank you, we'll address all comments after everybody has commented, but we do have a response.
This is the first time I'm attending one of these meetings. So appreciate your patience, I live at one oh two Fairway. And I.
Stick your name.
Sure, it's Jean Stoller. I'm at one oh two Fairway. So I. I started to get engaged with this proposed development and understanding what the changes are for that area. And I see a number of significant risks to our community, not just the residents that are in that particular area. But further on and closer to Forest Avenue, so. The proposal's supposed for five hundred apartments to be built, that's over a thousand cars a day. As Chris mentioned, while initially the plan is not to have a permanently opened road onto Howell. They could petition our community to have that road open permanently. And that would mean that a significant number of cars could filter out through Howell. Cunningham onto Forest and really flood our Forest Avenue school zone. I also know that, you know, there's a risk for property values to decrease and the reason. Pretty much would be like unsightly views, I've seen some proposals, you know, five stories of apartments. And and also the sounds that is going to be created out of there, in particular because they plan to take down sixty-three hundred trees. And with all of those trees also being removed, I think it has a potential to cause strain on our on our Verona. Water systems if they do not drain that area properly. And they have suggested they use some new technology and kind of experiment up there. And I'm not so sure that semi-permanent, you know, driveways are really going to address. The flooding that will come if we have one of these extreme weather events. And the other two things that I want to mention in terms of risks are. You know, there's wetlands up there and there are acknowledged wetlands. And there will be the destruction of that habitat for animals and reptiles, but I think that it also speaks to. You know, destruction of lands in Essex County, and I think that, you know, we want to be good citizens for ourselves in Verona, but also countywide and not. You know, let that property be, you know, destroyed for those various species and also. You know, the runoff, I mean, which everyone is very concerned about. And the last is construction noise, they're estimating three to five years of construction. And that with the, all the trees gone, that is going to be a negative also to our community. So I appreciate you listening, I see there is zero benefit. For this community to be developed for Verona residents, like none. for this community to be developed for Verona residents, like none. Um so I'd like you to listen to, you know, what everyone has to say. I wanted to actually ask, what is the town council doing? Um we see that there's a number of different uh activities that could be done. I've joined the We Care New Jersey, write to the D E P and discourage the development of those wetlands. Um donate money to We Care New Jersey. We have that organization has hired uh an attorney, environmental specialist, and we're going to need funds to help fight that. Um and, you know, really get involved and be good stewards of the land and and our community up there. So I appreciate you listening.
Thank you, Stala. Do you also in the audience have any public comments? And it doesn't look like there's anybody on Zoom, but if you're on Zoom, if you'd like to raise your hand, now's the time. It should be one last chance. On the closed public comment, um on the on the apartment building West Orange issue, I do share your concerns one hundred percent. I think they're concerns for everybody in the community, no matter where you live and what neighborhood you do. Our ability to take action is strictly limited by the fact that this is not in our jurisdiction. Um I am opposed to opening up the roadway. Um we, if uh we have other areas in town or we actually have gated roads that you can use for access, but that remain gated and locked, um like Westview Road divides us into two road. Um that has a gate on it because the road of Westview, if you drove a car down there too quickly, you'd end up in somebody's living room. Um so we do have some of those available. I know that's not the meat of the issue, but we do have that. I know uh former mayor Roman uh was involved in some meetings on that, so uh.
Um I'll just briefly comment that um I did have some conversations with the mayor of West Orange. Um some of this came up during the term uh when I was mayor. Um I actually did speak with a number of residents in that area that actually live in West Orange itself. Uh um then eventually found some of the Verona residents a little further up Howell. Um I talked about specifically the access road issue, um and I would agree that that should be emergency access only. There is no benefit to Verona to allowing it as a thoroughfare. Um the streets there are not designed for that volume of traffic, uh and it just should not be an outlet for them. But as the mayor just said, we have dealt with this situation before and uh where there are roads that are emergency access roads, there are gates that go on them and the gates stay locked. Um we look at these things when when we have the ability to make decisions, we're looking at it from the Verona perspective. Obviously, this development itself is happening outside of our jurisdiction. So our ability to affect what happens on the land is, you know, through state process and only, you know, where it does directly affect Verona. But we are watching this. Um I did uh mention this to Mr. Diarco, um and asked him to pass it through the township engineer um and our engineering consultants for an analysis of any impacts on the township of Verona. Um I do believe that we should be watching it. Uh and I I share your concerns, saying this is a very large development in an area that has been undeveloped. It does have known wetlands on it, and it could have a negative impact. And it will have a negative impact on the residents who are immediately up there, but could have a larger negative impact on the community as a whole. So I appreciate you coming tonight, uh at least, uh you know, we we are aware.
Mr. Johnson.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um the town engineer was notified. Uh we sat in on a meeting. Um they're monitoring the application that's going into the D E P. The D E P needs to do their homework. Um it's really not prudent for the township to jump in prior to the D E P's review and comment on that application. So we're waiting for it to come out of D E P before we take any uh any report that would be prepared by the engineer uh on the impact on Verona. So we're waiting to see the D E P's critique. The D E P tends to be enormously vigilant over wetlands and uh the impact on wetlands and and open space.
Thank you. Um I have had outreach from several of your neighbors and the We Care Organization about this development. Um and they um did reach out and ask to have that opportunity to sit in on the meeting with the administration. So Mr. Diarco graciously gave provided some of his time and the township engineers to speak through with your colleagues. I really want to thank you for coming tonight because I do think it's important for residents to remain engaged and to hold this elected body accountable, including myself. So, you know, please continue to engage in this process. I agree with my colleagues that right now the D E P process is in process and it's not, it's it's a bit premature for this governing body to opine at this time. My understanding is that the developer has received a deficiency notice and that they do have to go through a lot more um D E P scrutiny. Um that being said, I do, just as an individual, and I do live in the forest section of town, and I am particularly concerned about environmental impacts. Um I share your concerns about the proposal to remove so many trees and, you know, the stormwater implications of that um in particular. Um, you know, because it's all going to flow down to the Peckman and then, you know, other residents in our community. So even if that's not necessarily directly impacting you and your neighbors because it's flowing away from you, it is going to impact substantially several of our other community members that live much closer to the Peckman. And we've had substantial flooding as a result of what used to be considered a delightful lake brook. Um but it is in fact a river and it can be a raging river. Um so I am deeply concerned. Some of your um, some of your neighbors provided some historic Verona documents. Um I I think that the administration has received those and that they are going through a review of those. So I really want to thank you guys for your engagement and I want to encourage you to continue to engage um and to keep us up to date. Um I I know that the administration is is being very vigilant and I know that, you know, you guys have organized and you do have a lot of information available, which is great. Um so please keep that up. Um and when the time is ripe and the administration has actually had that opportunity to thoroughly review and D E P has completed, then that is probably the best time for us to further engage. So thank you.
I bet. Good man.
Uh yes, I I certainly echo everything my my colleagues here have said. I actually went to the meeting that they had at the Essex Fells Country Club. Uh it was quite informing uh to hear that sixty-three hundred trees were coming down. I think Council and Holland hit the nail on the head, and that's why my biggest concern was that order is going downhill and it's all going to the Verona Lake and then it's going to follow through to Peckman. And we all know we've had problems in the past along that area. Uh so please email us if you get updates and and let us know. Keep us, keep us in the loop. Uh as far as I know, I what what I saw from the layout, I I thought that uh the land that's owned there along Howell, uh that abuts that property, uh were going to be single-family homes along Howell, and there was going to be one small access road, and that was it. So I mean, if if single-family homes go up there, I don't looking at the drawing, it didn't seem like they could actually have enough room to put a road in there uh to build to so. So I I I we can talk later about it, but uh just by looking at the preliminaries, they could change. Uh and I one hundred percent agree that traffic cannot come through Verona. But unfortunately, that piece of Howell is West Orange. So it would be up to the township of West Orange if they granted that access. Uh but there are things that we could do in Verona uh with our our roads to to, you know, help divert or direct traffic in a different direction. So keep, please keep us informed, uh and we want to hear more about it.
I think, go ahead, Sam.
Um, thank you. I just want to end with saying that I am um, I live on your block, but down the hill. And so I really share your concerns about flooding because the amount of water that my property on personal level receives now is way more than it was when I moved in, you know, um uh thirteen years ago. So I definitely share your concerns and thank you. And I just wanted to add with, it's so, it's wonderful that you've come to here to engage us. And we were all um engaged in this project, maybe unbeknownst to you, but I too have sent several notes to the town manager on this project and, but we so appreciate you coming. The long haul is the advocacy at the planning board level on West Orange's side and their council. So with these types of projects, it's a very long road, so I applaud both of you. But as much as you can engage your neighbors to really attend every meeting where this is being discussed, many of them will likely be on the West Orange side. You should be going to those meetings, following those meetings. And even though you're not Verona, even though you're not West Orange residents, you should be there and present. I'm sure you will be.
And we welcome you guys to come to those. And it's actually, they're asking, West Orange residents are asking, will Verona Town Council show their support and come to those meetings?
So I'll defer to our town attorney on that um responding to to that. But I just want to say thank you for coming and and for advocating and behalf.
Thank you.
The uh, I think one other thing we can add in here, Mr. Diarco, is as we know more on our side, that we could have a the meeting for the residents of the area like we've done with road projects. We get hand-delivered notices out, and we've done that, and it's been very successful. We've offered in-person um Zoom and recorded options where uh we filled in what we know and what is in our scope of control. Um so we do have that ability to do that. Uh I'm going to work with Mr. Diarco to set up a uh continuous conversations with their, they have a strong mayor, former government in uh West Orange, but to set up some time with their mayor and their district administrator. West Orange is going through a lot of development issues right now, um which does actually help to delay this prospect a little bit to, out of fairness. But um they're, they're having some interesting times for West Orange. Um but we'll try and get a meeting on the books where we can go through that. But in the end, a lot of this is a planning board. There's only one board that is taking a look at this. Um and as far as uh attending meetings, participating in process, we'll hear from uh town attorney on that in closed session, perhaps uh legal opinion. That has to be included because he's providing us legal advice, um and we'll be able to provide you some more information. But I think getting the notice out to all the residents to potentially come to a meeting, when we know more, when the D E P report is out, at least we can share what we're doing on our side. Uh so we appreciate your advocacy. Does matter. This council does listen and respond to public feedback like no other governing body I think I've ever seen. Um so please keep coming and keep reaching out to us. There is also a uh, you can very easily email all the council members at the same time. There's a link from our website. Uh contact the council. It also includes the manager and the and township clerk. So if you have any updates or anything you'd like us to look at, shoot it out as a form, and you will hear back. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay. Uh moving on to hearing adoption, um uh ordinances, we have one ordinance on second reading tonight. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of ordinance number twenty-two-three dash thirty-seven into the record?
Men in Chapter One Forty Vehicles and Traffic, Article Six, Special Zones and Areas of the Code attached to Verona. No, as ever feel.
Madam Clerk, would you please move the ordinance?
Still move.
Motion by Councilman McGrath. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Holland. Um now is the time for a public hearing of ordinance twenty-two-three dash twenty-nine. Madam Clerk, would you please read the public person statement relative to this hearing?
Anyone wishing to address this item that's scheduled for a public hearing? If you're attending in person, you may approach the lectern. If you're attending via Zoom, please raise your virtual hand. You may do so by pressing the raise hand button on your monitor, dialing in by phone, please press star nine. When you are recognized and advised that you're unmuted, clearly state your name for the record. We'll have four minutes to address the co-council on this item only. Your comments and your questions um shall be limited to just that item. There will be no cross dialogue during the public hearings. And after everyone wishing to speak has been heard, public hearing will be closed to that item. The council and or administration may address your comments and questions before the vote is called. Please avoid repeating items previously discussed. And again, um these meetings will be posted on the YouTube, the township's YouTube channel. Addresses, addresses will not be redacted for any purpose.
That's Madam Clerk. This time, public comment is open. Three minutes. Now, public comment on the ordinance hearing. I'm going to close public comment. Is there any council discussion? None. Madam Clerk, would you call the ball?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGrath?
Yes.
Councilwoman Roman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy?
Yes.
Mayor Tambura?
Yes.
The ordinance uh twenty-two-three dash thirty-seven passes five to zero and will be published according to law.
Uh what is the effective date for this? Do we know?
Yes, September eleventh.
September eleven. We are signing, so it'll be, thank you. Chief Attorney is nodding his head in the back of the audience for those who can't see that. Uh but I need to finish my sentence, which is always great. Um we're going to move on to proposed ordinances. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance on first reading. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of ordinance each one minute on the record?
A capital ordinance appropriating eleven thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund to repair community center attached to Verona, down in Vest six years.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would somebody move the ordinance? So motion by Deputy Mayor McAvoy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Roman. Uh Madam Clerk, would you please call the ball?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGrath?
Yes.
Councilwoman Roman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy?
Yes.
Mayor Tambura?
Yes.
Veronese H one will be number twenty-two-three dash thirty-eight, will be published according to law, and a public hearing will be held September eleventh.
Mayor, make a very brief comment.
Yes.
Uh we had a request in for additional information on what the scope of these repairs were. Uh we just never received that. Who was?
I won't. I won't get that. I should pray for you, yeah.
All right. Councilman Roman walked in yesterday the other day and were monitoring our eleven thousand dollar.
Have to start it by the worship.
I think I would have been, I think that's understandable. It's kind of the thing.
Yes, we'll get that out someone.
Thanks, all right. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. We have uh one set of minutes from the July twenty-fourth regular meeting. Um we have uh one resolution to accept funding uh for this ass committee grant. And we have another resolution going to executive session. Uh will somebody please move the comment on the consent agenda? First, the same public comment applies, common is only on consent agenda items. We're going to open for public comments. If you'd like to comment on any of these three matters. Okay, seeing no public comment, I'm going to close public comment. Would somebody please move?
Some movie.
Second, motion by Councilman Holland, second by Councilman Roman. Is there any discussion? Uh Mr. Johnson, just want to give us a brief synopsis of the VMAX grant.
It's your standard application for funding.
That sounds good. And that goes into various programs that we have in town. Uh the VMAX, one of our citizen boards and commissions, does have a uh a compensated coordinator as well, and it provides a lot of and there are plenty of openings. Uh the town clerk is whispering on the side on VMAX. So if you would like to talk about how to spend the sixteen thousand dollars, please come on out and uh and put an application for that committee. Um we certainly could use your help. All right, any further discussion on the consent agenda? I hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the ball.
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGrath?
Yes.
Councilwoman Roman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy?
Yes.
Mayor Tambura?
Yes.
Mayor K one will be numbered one fifty-seven, K two, one fifty-eight.
Okay, thank you. We have no licenses or permits this evening, not have an addendum. Um our first item of new business is regarding a potential site to declare an area in need of redevelopment of the south side of Lincoln Avenue for the property known as the former site of Ronal Aluminum and surrounding properties. Just turn my pet council of Mr. Township Manager, Mr. Town Attorney, whoever wants to start us off.
Sure. So um Ronal Aluminum um wants to uh create a project on their property.
Just for the record, that's not Ronal Aluminum anymore.
No, 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 that's the property known as. So the current owners came and met with the manager and I were interested in completing actually a, my understanding is a a development, the development of property within the zoning. Um and it is a property that at least the manager and I looked at each other and said it would be a property that uh I think the township would like to see developed into something more than what is currently there because it is an odd that on building, I'll say, it doesn't have a lots of uses and certainly is not being used to its full potential. And they indicated that were to do the project that they would need, um the township to consider a pilot, the numbers don't really work out to develop that property. Um just based upon, you know, current costs as well as the shape of the property, what you can put on and they had uh both the manager and I, I don't want to speak for the manager, it certainly looked like a good uh project. And the first step in potentially seeing whether the council would be amenable to providing a pilot to see that develop, is to see if it's an area of need to redevelop. And in order to do that, we actually have to send a resolution to the planning board who then undergoes the study. So that's the first step. And if it does, indeed, at that point in time, come back that it meets the criteria to be declared an area redevelopment. And then we come back to the council to decide the parameters of, I'll call it the zoning that sometimes sits on top of the regular zoning. In this case, my understanding is if there are, it's conforming, so I don't think we need anything, but that could obviously change during negotiations with council has input on their vision. And then I also had multiple conversations with the clerk. Because you go on a spot zone, so what you wanna do, when you look at something like this, you'll get an area. So you could go from, you know, kind of that quarter property or even down Blueville Avenue a little bit more, maybe up to Everett Field, you might wanna go over Everett Field, there's another property in there that's being considered for, development that's under some litigation, that does not mean you can't, if it's, you know, an area that needs to be redeveloped. But we go up and down Blueville Avenue, actually, since I live in town. I did so, and there's actually lots of nice buildings also, so it kind of gets not confusing, but there might be, blocks that you do separately along Blueville Avenue, cause certainly not all of Blueville Avenue is blighted, but again, that's up to the, planning board professionals that they hire to do that stuff. So this would be the first step in that process, if you're interested in doing this.
And who bears the cost of the studies uptown?
Um, that would be something that would be handled by the planning board, but the developer, in this case, my understanding is that if there's a way to do that, they would wouldn't be willing to pick up the cost asked in the study with regard to their property.
Any questions, Mr. Oya? Just questions first and then comments? Any questions for clarification?
You, you mentioned, you mentioned, they brought a plan to you, you said it was within zoning and it was conforming? You mean to the current town center, it is town center?
That's my understanding of.
Conforming to the current zoning of town.
Yeah, that's my understanding, reflection, and actually one of the owners is here today, council lecturer, free to ask them questions as well, but yeah, my understanding in the meeting was that, the plan was according to our current zone. It was one over two, right? Commercial on the bottom with two floors of apartments on the top?
Fifty fifty.
Fifty fifty and works the whole, I'll call it the whole L, so. The.
Those two stories, just one over?
One over two. And so the parking would be in the back.
Okay.
The old portion on Church Street, don't call. Please fill out this out with the, you know, sort of front and apartment front.
Councilman McGrath, I saw your pen starting.
I, I guess, yes, I guess why I just got confused was, so, we talked about this one block, but then you talked about expanding. I mean, I think that's part of, why we're looking to hire our planner, which we're having a special meeting for at the later this week. I mean, we have a lot to do on Bloomfield Avenue, so, if this is moving ahead of a more comprehensive project, if that's the administration's recommendation, then I would think maybe we wanna consider doing the bare minimum of just, we could do just a block.
Certainly could do that. Actually, to a large degree, sometimes you'll send it to the planning board and say, look at this area. And they'll decide kind of the exact, because the professional that's hired to do that study, the area need of redevelopment study, will look at it and say that this property doesn't, you know, does, is, is not lighted, it doesn't meet the criteria, is, you know, for instance, if my guess, if you try to do the car dealership on the one three and blue, but that, and they'd say, no, this is not part of the highest best use in the world for that property. Obviously within, with our, with our zone.
So we're to go through here.
So from here, if the council doesn't have any questions, they wanna consider such, we will put an ordinance on for our next council meeting, that we just, have that recommendation to the planning board and directing them that we'd like them to undertake that study to see if the area indeed qualifies, to be a area need to redevelop.
The resolution.
A resolution, sorry for this.
I mean, before we, before we actually did that, I mean, I would want to see some more information. Like, since the area need of redevelopment, it's the council's option, whether or not we initiate this process, and then eventually comes back to, you know, the council as to how we manage it. I'd rather start off kind of knowing what are the causes for, you know, the declaration of whether or not anything is lighted there. You said that this is strictly a financial challenge. You know, I, I want to know a little bit more about, why before we sent it off to the planning board and kicked off the process. You know, obviously, I would like to see, you know, the site could be developed certainly to more than it is now. But especially if we're being asked to consider a larger area. Again, I share the concerns that we're, you know, looking at other things within land use and development right now. So if this is something that could potentially be more narrowly focused for the time being, that might be a better approach.
We can certainly ask for that property, the only thing that I was cautious of, and again, the professionals, the next step can decide that, is you don't wanna spot zone.
Right.
And say only this, and you just do this for one person, so usually those things are looked at a little larger than her.
Right, right, but just ultimately the genesis of, all right, so why are we, why is the council requesting that this particular area be investigated by the planning board? I'd rather see some argumentative reasoning, rather than, okay, well, we have one property owner, we're gonna build one thing on one law.
Certainly add that to the resolution, but certain things they look at is the size of the building, ceiling heights, things of that.
Right.
And while I don't know, I'm not that profession that makes that determination, just looking at this particular property.
Right.
If I had to guess, I would say that it would need the requirements for, a redevelopment only because the building is outdated, doesn't have the right commercial height ceilings. You know, just, it's obvious, it's that L shape, which is odd. I think there's a house back there.
Or a couple.
Yeah.
Right.
So interesting piece of property. I, I lived there for ten years.
Oh, did you?
And I am very intimately familiar with why that's a odd piece of property. So.
Right, basically, the ask of us is, it's looking for a tax, I mean, I mean, this is, this is driven by finance.
Yes, one of the reasons why you do an area redevelopment is because you can't otherwise, give them a break and, you know, but the council would be saying is, if this area meets, we would like to see this developed, because we agree at least visually from what we know, we're not a profession to decide that, but, this is an area town, we would like to see some development start, and so we'd like you to do a study to see if there are other tools in the box that we can use, so they just lay the market to some.
Deputy Mayor?
Yep, you mentioned this twice now already, spots on, when I first saw this, that's the first thing I thought of. And I know you, you're not allowed to have spots on me, but obviously, thinking back, I know it's something that, I don't know if they, since it's an area in need of redevelopment, it's not spot zoning, I know we've done it in the past. And our first thing that came to mind was the Verona Place apartments that we put up there. So that was really one piece of property, but it was split on two sides of a road, but it was still one owner, one piece of property.
The request is not to change the zone.
Correct.
Everything right now, based on cursory analysis, it would fall within permitted use of the zones, we wouldn't be dealing with, so I guess more of the financial.
That's exactly what.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one further question. So can you just address the fact that back in two thousand nineteen, there was a resolution already passed to do this?
This actually, I, I can, can I? I, I saw this, this was not, this property was never discussed with the council. This resolution is for one sunset.
It's a sample.
Huh?
It's a sample.
Oh, it's a sample. Oh, I was, I was, oh, 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 I'm sorry, I misread that. Why we, if it was already approved, why are we doing it? That's weird.
One of developers is here, is there anything you would like to add?
No, I'm, I'm learning as we go.
Sir, Diarco?
Brian and I have discussed this at length, and the intention for the property, it is underutilized and it's purely a financial issue. And it's only for that piece of property.
If I may offer a suggestion, I perceive this, Councilman Roman has asked for additional documentation, which I think is a fair, certainly a fair ask. Could we have a presentation perhaps from the property owners, on our September eleventh meeting with some of the detail of this to allow us to consider it, if you wanted to bring someone to present, attorney, council, whoever is there to represent you, planner, all of them, it doesn't matter. Kind of informally, we're looking at this, provide some additional information. We could have a resolution ready to vote on. It doesn't mean that we would, take action one way or another, but it would just give us something to look at and we could take action at that meeting, if we're comfortable with what we have, or it may, be one more meeting to give the council some time to, that's okay with everybody. Sounds like a good idea. All right, safe consensus? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for adding that. I have a second item of new business that is, on the agenda, but just a little preparation for our goal setting meeting next week. Just going to, about a kind of a brief outline of how I would like to see the meeting go. So the council members prepared, I will send this to you in writing, but I didn't wanna send it to you to sort of discussion, in writing, before I had the time to discuss. So, the way that I, I envision this meeting happening is for us really to hone in on smart goals. Things that are specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, time bound. Set a very specific goal of something we're gonna do, could be getting a specific project done, or meeting a need that we have identified in the community. So for instance, you know, we need to buy, July first of twenty twenty-four, expand our programming for diverse populations, ability-wise by twenty percent, something along those lines that we can measure. And then what I think we would spend some time doing, if all council members and of course, manager, Brian, you're welcome to get involved in this as well. Bring those to the table and I would ask you, when you come up, to classify them into one of the categories you've identified. Just gonna read a list, we can always expand this, so just areas, general code and ordinances, things we need to update. And I'll send this to everybody, so you don't have to take notes of everything, I'm that kind of teacher, right? I'll send you the PowerPoint. Boards and commissions and volunteers, land use, which of course is becoming, is always a topic, utilities, non-utility infrastructure, community services and recreation, public works other than utilities, public safety, so base fire and S O E M, all of those things. Intergovernmental relations and shared services, resident engagement, communications, and economic development in downtown. Did I miss anything as far as a larger category? And if I did, just send, you know, why I sent this out, and we'll add it in, this is everybody's project. And then with any request, what I would ask everybody to come in with is, the extent to which this program requires financing and operating budget. Capital allocations, Mr. Diarco's favorite topic. And, or if somebody would provide cost savings, right, that we're bringing. And then ask everybody to suggest a timeline. So I look the timeline in four pieces, year one, and year two, these are things that are within the scope of the current council, right, the next two years. Then I see twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight as our first set of out years. Some things that we would like to see that potentially we can't, make to future council, do the work that we've suggested, but certainly, or if we wanna start a program, but the township administration would be able to carry that through and we'd have a basis for this, and then twenty twenty-eight and beyond would be our last classification. And then if the council has consensus that this is a priority, we would establish a timeline for that, and would determine what parity level it is. I'm gonna ask everybody, especially the administration, I know it's a bit of a heavy lift, but you've already been working on this, so, as heavy a lift is, brings in progress items on as well. We can prioritize those from, within the agreed-upon items, we'll prioritize them, decide in the year what's first, what's second, what's third, and then determine who's responsible for the project. And then we would establish special committees of the council, to work with different administrative departments on seeing these projects through our working council. We had done that in previous years on my recommendation, and Mayor Roman was kind enough to do that, and would like to continue that. But I thought it would be more wise to wait to do subcommittees in this legislative cycle until we identified our priorities. Does anybody have any, anything to add, comments?
My concern, I think, is, you know, we could bring twenty items to the table, so should we be, have the discipline to be limited on how many items each one of us brings, not the administration, I think, but each council member.
I think, I would wanna put necessarily a number on it, but what I will ask everybody up here is, is I think savvy in understanding of the, the time constraints that are on, I think your point is incredibly valid. And it's one of these things that I'm a little worried about, but the way I look at this is, is that, if we have a lot of items that are all important, we'll focus on the ones that we think need to be done in the next year or two. And then we get it down, maybe in six months, have another meeting where we do the out-year items. And so anything that we're deciding is not year one or year two, we'll get that in, so we have a progress to go, and then we'll deal with the out-year items in, you know, in January. Or as we do additional budget planning, maybe November or something like that, so we can start putting that in there, but I think that point is valid. And for the council, you know, we, we are doing this as a, as an evening meeting for schedule purposes. So not enough, as much time as maybe a Saturday, so we can break it up. But I want to make sure that there are no other items of business on the agenda, so we can spend all of our time, that we know reports or anything like that. So we can spend all our time really discussing this. I think what we'll see is a lot of us will come in with similar items. And discussions I see us having are, a lot of them coming down to our most scarce resources and stuff. Personnel, money, and space. And I think those are, how we're gonna allocate those three things is a great economics challenge and, we can certainly do that for sure, get involved on that side. But I will send this to everybody, and I am looking forward to what everybody has to say, and if you might have an offline conversation with me. My broken foot is stopping me from starting that marathon training that I was planning for this week, so feel free to, take a key to call as you wish. Mr. Diarco, anything to?
No, sir.
Add in that, all right. Okay, and any other items of newer unfinished business to come before the council this evening? Hearing none, I am going to open public comment one last time for any item, that any member of the public would like to share with the council. The same public comment statement applies, we've actually had people leave, so we don't have to reread the comments. Nobody new has come in. Mr. Riley?
Evening, Chris Riley, I live in Verona. I'm glad to hear that the area need of redevelopment discussion was not about, jamming something, some big monstrosity into a, a small spot. It seems like it's going to be a normal development, but, could you give an update on where we are with the next range of public housing? Fair housing, I guess, is the right term. When the Sunset Development Project and the project up on Bluefield Avenue were discussed, it was a goal that we needed to meet by, I think, two thousand, and you said there was another slug of, of commitment that we needed to meet by twenty twenty-five. And here we are, three and a half years in, and not a lot of time left, so. If there's any specifics you can share, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Like, Sir Riley, any other public comment? Hearing done, I'm gonna close public comment at this time. Mr. Diarco, did you wanna give a brief update on the affordable piece?
Yeah, well, you're, you're, you're in line with, you're a master, you've resolved all those issues that you did have. Resolve those issues with the master. And you have your affordable housing team in place, your administrative agent is on, who's part-time, and the planner relative to redevelopment and the affordable housing and the attorney, so that team, has been in place. The project, on Bluefield Avenue is well underway. The new developer is taking over that from Pearl, Conifer, and that project is moving through the system. And they are, administrative agent is, is getting all the data on the units and, so is the tax assessor, getting all the information and data. The other two projects that are on the deck for you, one sunset, they're still at the planning, what I believe, in our twenty twenty-six date, there hasn't been any data, in my office on our, our obligation at this stage of the game. The entire state is looking at the, next due date on obligation, and that'll be in with attorneys at that moment in time.
Thanks, yeah.
Same that one, we'll look again.
Yes. Any other councilmen who's just to respond to public comment? Okay. Hearing none, we will be going into executive session this evening, taking any formal action.
No formal action there. Uh, but before we go into executive session, I just wanted to let you know that I did um speak to the chief about an ordinance to deal with those ETVs that was built out earlier. And he indicated that he would like to see an ordinance on for forfeiture. I've actually directed that. He's in the process of reviewing that because it was just wrapped it as we sat here. Um, so if it's, if the mayor council would like, what we can do, um, with, of course, the clerk's permission is maybe get it on either for uh, this Friday or the following Tuesday, especially for first reading this way, second reading could be on September the 11th. So it would be in effect, you know, relatively close to us, you know, quickly as this council could, we go out four weeks from now. And we just give them one extra tool to toolbox.
I, I think that invites some certainly some discussion, uh, and generally you can have a we would look at the ordinance, have some discussion. I understand that council thoughts.
Um, I would tend to lean towards wanting additional discussion on it. I mean, it's anytime that you're, that you're using sort of special powers to, you know, seize property, it's, you know, I know that that's just a, something that we should be, you know, I think that in concept, it's good to have the tool. I just want to make sure that we have a thorough discussion as to the ramifications of it. Um, that being said, I mean, it's you know, I, I guess that's the question is, do we want this to push the effectiveness date into November, for example? Um, or do we think that that doesn't make a difference that we're unlikely, you know, but I think that's a good question for, you know, where the chief ultimately is, you know, what is the timeliness of this ordinance, but.
It's an ongoing, regular thing, but I don't think it's going to uh necessarily actually disappear because the ordinance of council has to wait till September 11th, you know, the ordinance would be effective. Uh, I would guess in October, 10th, somewhere in there.
Completely pass. I know sometimes we pass the ordinances with an emergency, um, to essentially, uh, to, to.
To raise the assault.
To wait this.
Ten days. Yeah, you'd still be, you know, October by the time it's done.
Right, but we could do that. We felt that it was um, that.
Yeah, timing can't adopt on, the timing can't adopt on the 11th if we introduce on the 29th.
It's 10 days, is it?
Labor Day weekend with the deadlines, we're not going to make it. It's on the 29th to introduce this one. Because I need four days though before it can be published when I send it to the paper.
Well, I think we'd work that out, we'd publish it ahead of time, but.
Well, I think it, yeah, it must. I tend to agree with Councilman Ryan, man, as far as this is civil forfeiture is a pretty hot topic, uh, in American constitutional law and uh, in New Jersey, and I think it's something that we should take some time to look at. I think if we have an ordinance that um, if we can get a copy of it, it'll give us till September 11th. Couple of weeks where we can talk to the chief, we can talk to Mr. Loyah, uh, we can ask some questions. If we were comfortable, we could stop introducing from the floor on September 11th, we would have our discussion at that point. Um, as we are all committed to doing something about it. Um, what I would want to hear more about, and I'll love each other's shit correctly, is one of the issues that we see is actually stopping the vehicles, right, to, to forfeit them. So we would have to stop the vehicle, we'd have to actually obtain it in order to apply forfeiture. So I'd like to hear more about how that is done, if that could be something that's done ex post facto, if there was evidence of it, or if it could be done at the time. So I do have some questions as far as what would the advocacy be? Uh, I know somebody actually had the conversation with Captain Wardrill about the uh congestion filling ordinance, um, but what's happening, a lot of the folks are springing um, plastic containers with them and just filling those so that ordinances and other towns haven't really had an impact on that. Um, so I think we need to have a conversation of, I don't want to pass something that could have negative effects. If they were trying to solve a problem that's very much coming through Roanoke, but this ordinance could have effects on our residents as well. So if we, you know, depending on what it looks like, if we, you know, I'll ride a dirt bike on, you know, a local street where that could be handled another way, we're talking about potential asset forfeiture for that. And then putting our police or whoever, our prosecutor judge in a situation where they're citing whether an asset is foreclosed. That's, I get a little iffy about that. Um, so I think that we need to take some time and look at this, but I don't think the problem will be going away. Um, and it is a systemic one. Um, and I know that uh the, this department is doing everything they can to address it, but because of the seriousness of this, I, I think we need to take some time.
Great.
So we'll.
It'll be off the.
And I just want to add to that. I, I really have concerns about what actions we put in place on the safety of our places. So it is a safety issue was happening. It's, it's not good. And so, but at the same time, we need to make sure that we are, our actions, our, the police department is comfortable with money, any actions we take, because if we're engaging in a different way with this group, are we inciting then additional um, aggression or aggravation in the situation that we, you know, multiple towns can't control this situation. So I would also like to see if we, and maybe this is an opportunity for you to reach out to other mayors to, what is regionally, is there a regional solution and this would take the individual.
The chief has been working on that with the other apartments and, um, I think that's, I actually did speak to a couple of folks from other towns about this and, um, you know, it is, it certainly is an issue that's facing the weather of Roanoke. Um, and I don't want to get into some of the, I would first from my work at Brian's recommendation as well, but I think we have a we have an opportunity to do something. Uh, the police would always have the ability to the discretion on whether it's safe to enforce, but we don't want to also pass an ordinance that's unenforced. So we have a lot to think about in this area. Um, but Brian, I appreciate your work on it and getting something mailed right away. And uh, we are responding to, appreciate the police sparking on situations as well. All right. Um, at this point, we will be going into executive session, uh, make our motion to go to session some motion by Councilman Roman, just for a second. I'll say, if I was in favor, I, I, all right. Thank you, everyone. Have a lovely day.